I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order and thank everybody for attending and ask you to stand. And David has made a presence tonight. I'd like to ask him to offer our invocations.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, David. All right, we've got a couple items on our Items to Community Interest Council. If you'll notice, there is lots of information from across the street over the Community Development Board's office. First thing is an emergency preparedness event that's taking place this Thursday night at the Community Center. You can apply, I mean, you can sign up online and pay online if you would like to attend. If you can, please do so by tomorrow. And then Cindy handed out a bunch of information for you'll see the upcoming events. We have a bass tournament this weekend at Amun Carter Lake. October the 3rd on a Friday night, we have a sippin' stroll. And then she's also included in there for you a day's agenda for the Chicken and Bread Heritage Event Heritage Festival on October the 4th, Saturday.
We've hired an engineer for the new raw water pump to be installed at the Lake Raw Water Pump Station. The design cost estimate is $202,400. The cost estimate for the pump and installation is $677,700, making a total of about $880,100, which is within the original estimate of $850,000 to $950,000. We've hired the engineering firm of Hazen and Sawyer with offices in Fort Worth. Their lead engineer on this project is Ty Rebe, who has worked at our water plant with another firm. He was an associate engineer for the conversion of a project of chlorine to bleach at the water plant. Ty is very familiar with our water system. The complete project is estimated to take 84 weeks, including engineering and design, the bidding process, and final construction. Took a self-guided tour down Smythe Street last Tuesday and found a traffic mess and good progress within the project. The water lines have been laid, but it's not had been connected as of last Tuesday. Work was beginning on the sidewalk construction with forms being built and the old sidewalks being torn out. We now have a timetable for the airport layout plan and a GS obstruction survey, which will begin with a public hearing on October the 3rd. And the request for quotations will be sent out in October as well. A consultant engineer will be chosen in March of 2026. We'll be choosing our own engineer with this project, somebody that we're used to dealing with. The project is a $426,000 grant project with only $21,300 as the city's share. This plan is much like the city's master plan, but is for the future uses of the airport. It'll look at possible obstructions at the airport. Any questions?
So get an engineer after the, after we send out the process request?
Yeah, RFQ, yeah. We get, we get proposals from engineering firms, but we'll get the, we'll get to pick our own engineer.
I see.
Yeah, you can either do it, we pick it, or the state picks it, and we'd rather pick our own.
And then what's the timeline on the Smythe Street project as of right now?
Yeah, probably about a year.
The Smythe Street project?
Oh, Smythe Street. Oh, it should, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the GS project. No, Smythe Street should be done probably within about three months.
Okay.
Any other questions for Burke? Yes, ma'am?
Have you been notified at all about a water breach in the system in the Smythe Street project? I noticed that our water at the clinic is extremely cloudy this afternoon. I mean, it almost looks like milk.
I have not. But I will do a work order and let them, if there's not been a breach, then I'll let them flush the land.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, counsel? All right, in your packet was minutes for the comprehensive planning meeting and for the, on the 24th and for the regular meeting on the 26th. If you have read them and have no corrections, I would entertain a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Truax.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
And Truax. Thank you. All right, your next item on the agenda is the second reading of Ordinance 25, 2025-07, An Ordinance Adopting an Annual Budget for the City of Bowie for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1st, 2025 and Ending September 30th, 2026, Adopting a Reference Document as Said Budget and Establishing an Effective Date and Repealing All Ordinances and Regulations in Conflict Herewith. This is the second and final reading of the budget, so I would entertain a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Sproles.
Yes.
Truax.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
And Sproles.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is appointments, consider reappointments for the BEDC. Those applications are also and updated in your packet. They'll have to be voted on individually, but your first three are for the BEDC, a two-year term. And your first member is Carla Swafford. We'll have to entertain a motion and a second and a vote on each one. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Post. Walker.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Truax. The second individual is Dean Myers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm gonna go with Post on one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Sproles. Shaw.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Walker. Your next item on the agenda is to consider the reappointment to the BEDC for a two-year term, no, wait a minute, 4B Sales Tax Corporation for a two-year term, them being Todd Brown, Blake Inlow, and Ward Wallace. Your first one is a motion for Todd Brown.
So moved.
Truax, do I have a second?
Second.
Shaw. Post.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Truax. Your second individual is Blake Inlow. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Post.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
And Post.
Aye.
Your last individual is Ward Wallace. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Truax, do I have a second?
Second.
Sproles.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Pam, I'll call you as soon as we get to the last one.
Thank you.
The Consider an Appointment to the 4B Sales Tax Corporation for a Two-Year Term of Jeff Segler. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Post. Walker.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
And Post.
Aye.
Pam, can I answer a question for you?
Yes, please. On these particular groups, are you required to be a citizen of Bowie living within the city limits in order to serve on these boards?
No.
No, you're not. All right, so the next item on the agenda is for the Parks Board. We are going to consider the appointment of Terry Gunner and Kristy Bates. They also will be motioned and voted on individually, so our first one would be Terry Gunner. Do I have a motion to appoint him to the Parks Board?
I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many members does that board have now?
Three.
Didn't realize they had that many of them.
So do I have a motion for Terry Gunner?
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Sproles. Walker.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
And Sproles.
Aye.
The next individual is for Kristy Bates. Do I have a motion to put her on the board?
So moved.
Sproles, do I have a second?
Second.
Walker. Ashley, Ashley's not here, sorry about that. Walker.
Yes.
Post.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
And Truax.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. He just stepped out of the way. Next item on the agenda is to approve the interlocal agreement with 911 Public Safety Answering Point Service between Nortech's Regional Planning Commission and the City of Bowie. This is something we do annually, am I, if I remember correctly?
Basically what this is, is 911, we get our 911 service from Nortech. They handle all the equipment. They use federal money for ours, just like they do all of the states. So anyway, they, you know, they upgrade the equipment, they keep it working and stuff like that, so. Tim, I believe is the name, can't remember his last name.
That, that information was in your packet, too. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for 911 Public Safety.
So moved.
Post, do I have a second? Walker. Shaw.
Yes.
Truax.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
And Walker.
Aye.
And it's a very long one, so hang on. Very, very long. Anywhere's funny. You, you just got lucky. That's all there is. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a Resolution 2025-28. Wait, 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 I gotta finish reading it. A Resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Bowie, Texas authorizing the annual transfer and reallocation of funds from the utility and general funds to designated accounts.
Basically what this has done is just codified what we were supposed to do every year, where we take retained earnings and, and put them into account to save money and for infrastructure and other improvements, so.
As you will recall, counsel, this was discussed in your budget meeting. The Finance Director asked you to appropriate at least 50%, not, a maximum of 50% of the fiscal budget earnings, retained earnings, one to the infrastructure program and another to the streets improvement with the general fund. It is something that you all have discussed. So if you're still inclined to do so, entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
The whole point here is to just get both of those funds when we're actually.
Have a surplus, yeah. We're trying to build up.
Not having to go out tomorrow or scrape and scram, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
I will make that motion that we adopt this.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Post. Walker.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
And Shaw.
Aye.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2025-08. This is a mouthful. An ordinance amending Chapter 4 Business and Commerce of the City of Bowie Code of Ordinances by repealing Article 4.2 Mobile Phone, Mobile Food Vendors at the Bowie Food Court in its entirety and adopting a new Article 4.2, Its ordinances or orders, providing for a severability clause, adopting a savings clause determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act and establish an effective date. David, do you want to say anything about this? You want me to just? Okay. When we brought this to you, there was a different set of laws with the state. And we also said if it's not working, we'll look at it again and we'll redo something. Well, the state took away the permitting process for the cities. They now are, well, they've always been permitted through the state, but there are now no permitting process for the city. Am I wrong?
That's correct.
Things correct.
It's not an effective, but it's.
Yes, so we're going to blow it up. We're just gonna say, we're gonna change it. And the next ordinance will tell you what the change will be, but the, the gist of it is as long as they're in a legal parking area or on private property, they will be allowed to conduct business as a mobile food vendor. Is that simple enough, David?
Fantastic.
Yes, so it's going to open up a lot. Although I will tell you, I have a food vendor that gives me advice every once in a while, and he says we may be going too far. I'm just telling you. So we may blow it all up again in a year, but right now we're going to completely repeal this, this chapter. So I'd entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Post. Shaw. Yes?
Yes.
Truax.
Sorry, I'm, I have the next thing.
Sproles.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
And Walker. Now we're going to go to Ordinance 2025-09. Keep it with myself here. An ordinance of the City of Bowie, Texas amending the City of Bowie Code of Ordinances by deleting the City of Bowie Appendix C, the fee schedule mobile food unit permits of 2025 in its entirety and providing a savings clause, a repealer clause, and an effective date. So now we're doing away with the fee because we can no longer charge the fee. So I would entertain a motion to accept this as presented.
So moved.
Sproles, do I have a second?
Second.
Walker. Shaw.
Yes.
Truax.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Yay. All right, we have another incident, incidents like we had on the last agenda. This one is to consider a resale bid regarding property 406 Wes Nelson struck off on the June 3rd, 2025 Sheriff's Sale. Go ahead and give them the same spiel you gave them last time.
I don't think it's legal. They're supposed to be sold on the courthouse steps, and it wasn't. It was, they made an offer later. So you can do what you want to do, vote for it or against it, but I just, personally, I don't think it's legal. David, do you have an opinion?
I did talk to the attorneys, and they advised that the county could accept that at Commissioner's Court, but it would, it takes the school and the cities that agrees to it as well. If one of them disagrees to it, then it can't be done. But we can take those two properties and put them on an auction site and get a whole lot more money than what they're offering.
Again, I, David told you, David didn't tell you, but he told me last time that he can put this on an auction site, and I, I don't believe, I think, I think this is a precedence, that we don't want to be a part of setting. If it doesn't go off, if it doesn't sell the way it's supposed to, somebody can just walk in and hand a check for $650 for a property that they're saying is worth $93,000. So I say.
We also have costs in this, right?
Yes, we do have costs and a lot of them.
We have payments and other back taxes and things that we're not even seeing any of that of. It goes, let's, this way.
Yeah. I, I don't have a vote unless I have to, but I definitely do not think this is something the City of Bowie should promote.
I agree. It seems kind of shady.
So I'd entertain a motion to, okay, what's the exact wording you want to read, to no?
Well, we can either do that or just put it down for the lack of anything.
What do y'all want to do?
I'd like to vote no.
Okay, so you're, make a motion to vote no on ordinance, I mean, on the resale.
You would just say that you are not going to accept the bid.
We are not going to accept the bid. So make that motion.
Make a motion that we do not accept this.
Okay. Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Post. Truax.
I swear we got confused last time.
Yes, it is.
I agree with him.
So yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sproles.
I agree with him.
A yes voter, a no voter.
Post.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
And Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Ordinance 2025-10, An Ordinance Levying an Annual Ad Valorem Tax Rate for the City of Bowie, Texas for the year 2025. If you want to make that motion, please let me know, because there is exact verbiage.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of .5430, which is effectively a .6 increase in the tax rate.
So a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
When we have, ask a question. So when we, this is the second reading of this, correct?
No.
It's like, didn't we just vote for a tax rate? We voted to keep it the same.
No, we just had to public.
It is indeed a tax increase.
It's the same tax rate. Okay. There's an, there's an, there's an income, income increase, yes, but it's the same tax rate that we've had. This will be the fourth year.
So homeowners aren't paying any more than what they did.
Per tax.
I can't say that.
Per hundred.
Per hundred. They're paying the same.
What, what you can say is because of the valuations of the properties, we're bringing in more income, but the tax rate is exactly the same. So if your values with the appraisal district went up, you're gonna pay more. If they didn't go up, you're not.
But our rate's the same.
Our rate is the same, yes.
It just reads funny, so it's like.
It does read funny.
It's a .6, so it's like, well.
Yes, it does read funny.
That's the way I understood it.
So I have a motion on the floor by Shaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Truax. Sproles.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement for mutual aid and fire and emergency services between Shepherd Air Force Base and the City of Bowie, Texas. Kirk is here. If you have any questions, it seemed pretty self-explanatory in the document, but he might have some highlights.
I promise I'm not reading all six pages.
Thank you.
Let me give you the backstory a little bit. Several months ago, we had a tank battery fire south of Bowie on Highway 59 near Bug Scuffle Road due to a lightning strike. Bowie Rural Fire Department and Sunset Volunteer Fire Department fought the fire the first night. They were able to get it partially extinguished using firefighting foam that they had on hand. Most rural departments do not keep much foam around because it's, it's expensive. The next day, there was a rekindling of the fire, and they contacted Shepherd Air Force Base for mutual aid to help provide foam, which Shepherd Air Force Base is happy to do. However, the lawyers got involved and said, you don't have a signed mutual aid agreement with the Air Force with a hold harmless clause that if we provide you with the foam and something bad happens, environmental issues, health issues, we will be held harmless. So the Air Force has asked that anybody that's interested in getting mutual aid from the Air Force, please sign this document. It was written by a whole bunch of Air Force lawyers. It's six pages long. The hold harmless clause is Page 3, Section F2. And basically, it just says if we provide you with foam, we'll be held harmless in the event of a bad outcome. So that's what we're doing. The chances of us needing firefighting foam are pretty slim. We don't have any tank batteries inside the city limits of Bowie, Texas, but we have two national rail lines running through town carrying God knows what. We also have an airport, which we have an agreement with Shepherd Air Force Base that their aircraft can practice touch-and-go landings at the, or approaches at the airport. So there's that issue. If we were to have a crash at the airport, it would be nice to have a mutual aid agreement with Shepherd. They are very happy to provide mutual aid if we ever need anything. And they've done that several times in the past year or two in the area. Wildfires, the train derailment a couple of years ago up near Vernon where the tank cars full of ethanol caught fire. Shepherd is out there helping with that. So that is the purpose of doing this. It does not cost us anything. It's just an agreement to have on hand, so if we do need help, we can get it.
But it's not, they're not obligated to provide any help if they decide so.
They're not obligated. The fire chief at Shepherd's answer was even without the mutual aid agreement signed, we would come help you if you ask. We just couldn't give you foam. So, but they are more than happy to come assist if we were to call, and certainly if it involved one of their aircraft at the airport.
Sure.
They would be here in a heartbeat.
So, any other questions for Kirk?
Thank you.
So I entertain a motion, entertain a motion to, motion to consider the agreement of mutual aid and fire emergency with Shepherd Air Force Base.
So moved.
Truax, do I have a second?
Second.
Post. Shaw.
Aye.
Sproles.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
All right, that's all of our items, but we are open for public comments. If anybody has anything, they'd like to go to the podium bar. Go on, what?
Do you need this, or you want me just to turn it off?
It helps the other people away from the meeting.
From the online. Okay, because I know that my voice is loud and it carries very easily, so I'm not trying to run y'all out of the room. There's been a lot of stuff going on, and one of the things that I have a problem with is someone who has come into Bowie from outside is the clickishness, if you will, of a lot of the folks in Bowie. It has been very difficult for me through the years trying to become established and accepted and that sort of thing. I, I'm not the only one that feels that way. I've heard from a lot of people who feel the same way. I think that if Bowie wants to grow and prosper and that kind of thing, that we really need to work on that. If you want to know the specifics of it, I can give you names and what happened and who said it and who did it, but that, that's pointless unless anybody is interested in actually looking at things. I have tried to be a part of this community in every way I know how. I've served on the Chamber of Commerce, worked on the auctions, I've been in the parades, worked on the parades, made floats. I've served on Main Street, been an officer both on Main Street and on the Chamber of Commerce. I've made myself available to the city in every way that I can, and yet I still feel the pushback. So I would like to ask, and I know I just have three minutes, but I'd like to ask for everybody to consider, I've been here since 1984. I wasn't born and raised here. I don't have, oh, I have family here because I brought them here, okay? My brother and his wife moved here. My sister and her husband and their children all moved here. So I brought people into Bowie, taxpaying, good, honest citizens in this town. We're not causing trouble. We're not against the law in any way, shape, or family. I've supported the police. I've supported the fire department. I've done everything I know how. I just would like to be accepted as part of Bowie, Texas in the same way that everybody whose name got here in 1800. I think it's very important, if we're gonna do. I think it's very important, if we're gonna do anything beyond just being, and I'm sorry to say it this way, I don't mean it to be mean, but a little hick town, okay? We want to be Bowie of the 21st century, and I would really like to see that happen.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I thought we were always gonna get up here.
Oh, Lord.
Y'all haven't seen me in two years. And Pam, I respect you, you know that. And I didn't come here, we've been here almost 21 years now, so. I'm, my last name don't mean nothing in this town, unless you talk to certain people, it means mud, but I've done the same, I volunteered, I've done what I could to help. The only thing that I can say to that is the approach. Brandon's been to my house and talked to me. We don't see eye to eye on everything, but we stood together like two grown men talking to each other. Stephanie, Brent, Laura, Laramie's probably the only one that I don't know personally, although I know some of your family very well. I don't, I don't, I'm not as active in the community anymore because my business is very, very busy now, but I think it's kinda like our parents taught us, you know, sometimes it's the tone we take with people. Boyd, I understand that you're fixing to be the City Councilman in my precinct. I would love to talk to you after this meeting, because I do not know you, sir. And are there going to be issues in this town? Yeah, yeah, there is. We're a town 5,000 people, but I've lived in cities as big as Colorado Springs, Colorado, Waco, Texas, Greensboro, North Carolina, there's problems everywhere. Here, it should not be as bad because we're all neighbors, but again, it comes down to treating each other with a little bit of mutual respect. You don't have to agree with anybody. I mean, I've known Laura and her husband for probably almost as long as we've been in Bowie.
Seventeen years.
And, you know, there's things that we do not agree on, but it's how we speak to each other. Brandon and I have clashed heads because we don't agree on things, but we stood and talked like grown adult men to each other and pretty much agreed to disagree. You know, I've been to guy's office and sadly, for, actually, it was for good reasons. I haven't gotten in trouble here, so. I met, I met Marge, you know, Kent, who is retired now, helped when we started a neighborhood watch program. I went to the police department, didn't really know any of them, but I, our mayor, first time I walked in her office, I walked in her office with a chip on my shoulder. I was like, I'm fixing to complain about this electric rate. And she said, okay, sit down, let's meet. And we obviously are friends now, me and her husband are friends. Janice, I didn't know until I started, I don't know, mowing a park or painting a bench somewhere, you know?
Dylan, you're getting close.
Every one of, I'm, no, I'm almost out of town, time. We're, we're, treat each other with mutual respect and agree to disagree, but it's a mutual respect thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else?
You'd have to ask her, because it's outside the city limits.
I know, it's outside the city, there's, I have a concern.
I don't, I don't know that we can do anything about it, but.
And I don't know if anybody knows about it, but I just.
Go to the podium. And your name.
Darla Carnute. And lived here my whole life, raised my kids here, got my grandkids here, worked really hard, paid our taxes our whole life, me and my best friend. In between Sunset and Bowie, nice little farm, nice little habitat, wildlife. We've got a Biltong meat processing center being built out there, and it's just, they say it's just gonna be a store, but it is gonna be a kill processing center, and it's right in my backyard. And I don't think we know that the environmental impact that this is gonna cause five to 10 years down the road. And we have worked hard to get what we have, to leave it to our grandchildren, and I'm just concerned about these things not having regulations. These people have been moving for the last six weeks, and they don't have no permits, no regulations, nobody knows anything, the county attorney doesn't know anything, the county judges don't know any, but, you know, my county commissioners don't even know anything.
Have you tried the health department?
I have tried the health department.